Okay, so welcome everybody to the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Monday, December 12th, 2022 at 7:03 PM. First thing I would like to, and I can actually say this now, this is actually really impressive, at least since the first time that I've been the chair, and probably actually the first time in a long while, we have a full board, all in person, including an alternate. So Yumila did get her, our recommendation to have her appointed the alternate, did get approved at the trustees meeting the other week, so welcome.
Thank you.
It's official now, so we're glad you're here.
We're nice to have another person, you know, on the board and, yeah, just have everyone
here in general, so that's really nice. I thought somebody would be online for sure, so. So first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. There's two, there's the, so we'll start with the November 14th, 2022 minutes. If you get a chance to read them, I know there were some comments back and forth about them, so any edits people had.
I saw two things, but I'm not sure if they were corrected, if this is the first video or second one Mike sent out.
I was gonna say, I was wondering how we let know which is the final version with all the corrections in it, how are we doing that?
Mike?
Mike sends it, but it's like, I don't know where it's been changed without going back and making a comparison. Is there some way to do that?
Well, this last time I sent it out, I think I made a note on there that Lorraine had sent some changes and I had made the changes on it. And generally, when I do get it, I will send it back out saying that there was changes made by whoever.
Okay.
And then I would put it in your packet, in this case, I don't, we didn't have a packet this week, but I did send it out.
Did you?
Did you get the change on line 119, Mike? That should be considered, not consider?
Which number, and we're talking about the 14th, right?
Hang on a second, Pat.
I was gonna say, you can put them up on the screen if you have, Mike.
Lisa, usually what I do is when, because you know how, I always, I always set the track changes all, and then I send it back to Mike that way, and then hopefully, I guess what I can start doing is put my initials after that, and then you'll know.
I was, I thought, okay, great, so I looked at it, I said, okay, yep, 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 except I knew, I happen to know about bedrooms.
Oh, right, I learned something.
Because I, we'd had a septic tank installed early on in our village experience, and so I know it's based on bedrooms, which makes a lot more sense if you start to really think about it, because you could have 12 bathrooms, but how many people are living, could be living there? And so it makes sense, but that was the only thing that I saw, and, but then when it's finally sent out to all of us, it's not evident where the changes have been made, is all I'm saying.
Oh, I see what you mean.
It's like, I feel like I've got to reread everything very carefully again. So what's on line 119, is just a consider versus past tense versus present tense?
Says would be considered.
Yeah, I got that one back.
And then what about line 127? Should we quant it, not quas it?
I fixed that one. I did fix that one.
Good, yeah, that one was fixed.
It's all ahead, so.
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion to approve the November 14th minutes.
I move that we accept November 14th minutes as amended.
Motion by Lisa.
A second.
Second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
On to the November 29th minutes. Any changes? Okay, entertain a motion to approve those. Motion by Pat. Second by Lorraine, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, go ahead, Mike.
Hey, Mike, who moved that? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's motion by Pat, the second by Lorraine.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period, this is a chance for anyone either here or online to comment on something that's not already on the agenda, go ahead.
I'm a member of the public.
There you are.
And I'm here as an observer for the community party.
Great, thank you.
And Susan Ainsley covering for the Board of Trustees.
Hey, Susan.
You're welcome.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I'll move to close the public comment period.
Motion by Jim, second by Lorraine, all in favor?
All right, aye.
Okay. First item on the agenda. Well, next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for the final plat of cluster subdivision proposal number 2021-4464 by Beer Properties LLC. I will not read the whole thing off, because we've read it off many times, but, Mike, did you want to just give us a quick note on this item?
Dave's, Dave is not showing up, he told me he was not ready. I did send him last week, I sent him not only the requirements for what needs to be on the final plat, which I believe he actually got about three weeks ago, I also sent him the list of items that needed to be on the preliminary plat also, because obviously the final plat has to contain all those items, and they, and they aren't consistent as far as what needs to be on the preliminary and what needs to be on the final, so now he has all the information, I wanted to make sure that there were no questions, and he's just not ready to do that yet.
So. Great, thanks, Mike. Any questions on that?
So we just.
Kind of, kind of in a waiting, yeah, just keeping it open, just waiting for it to come back with.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for special permit number 2022-4629. We've talked about this a few times, but this is a request to have a detached second residence located at 991 Cuyahoga Heights Road, tax parcel number 43.1-1-29. This triggered a special permit because of the new, well, A, because of the second residence, but the really general focus we've been talking about is how this comes into play with the new tree law, so, Zach, how's it going?
Oh, good, how are you?
Yeah, good. You or Mike wanna start us off with updates since the last meeting?
Well, just, just real quick, and I'll let Zach have it, he and I passed emails back and forth, and with the frontage he had on there, it figured to be three trees, but he already has an existing tree out front, so with the remaining linear footage, it basically just required to put in two more trees, and that's based, and that's, that's kind of where we left it.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
Anything else you wanted to add, Zach?
No, yeah, we'd settled on two trees, and if, I'm not really clear on the process when we do that, but sometime after sewer, if that's within a, you know, a generally accepted timeframe, then we'd be, we'd be doing it then.
Sure. So folks do have in front of us a proposal or a resolution, if we did wanna look forward to this tonight. Mike did put, in addition to the normal conditions and requirements that we have in there, a couple that would sort of cover what we've been talking about, those are D and E, so D is really for the, you know, an estimate for the planting of those two trees and establishing an escrow, and then E is a condition about the existing septic system to make sure that it would, you know, be up to standards if a, if a, if a second residence was added there, so.
And Zach, I sent that to you late, for you to review, but I'll bring it up on the, on the screen here when it comes time to go through, in general, the D is, D describes, you're gonna be required to put in two street front trees, you have to get an estimate for it, get it to me, I'll approve the estimate, and then at that point, we'll need an escrow for the establishment of planning of the.
You froze.
What did I say? The rest of us frozen too?
Yep, all of them are frozen, everyone's frozen.
Disconnected, period.
Nope, it's open.
Now more than that. I was like, three minutes.
Three minutes now, um, yeah, we lost you when you were talking to Zach about what
I just had one question about D.
Do you wanna bring it up on the screen, Mike?
And you need to start our video.
Oh, our video?
Oh my gosh.
They got muted. Yeah.
This says Jody.
And it won't let us start the video. Hang on a second, will it start that one? Okay, how about that one?
Oh my goodness.
Oh, okay, well, it's not gonna let us start that one.
I don't think it's recording. It's recording, I have to, yeah, it's recording, I mean, for us to.
Do we have audio at least?
Yeah, Mike, you can hear us okay, right?
Well, audio's the most.
Okay, well, I guess for subsequent votes, I'll make sure.
So now we can just make all the faces.
Yes. Yeah, sorry, there's an issue.
My only question about D is, what is it triggering? So is that like prior to the building permit being issued, prior to what's happening? Does the estimate have to be submitted? I just think something needs to be.
Oh, yeah, right, a deadline of some sort.
Yeah.
Well, the special permit has not yet been granted, right?
It would be granted subject to these.
Subject to the conditions.
Right, so shouldn't it?
Uh oh. Would that be?
Yeah, that's true.
So I would think it would either be prior to the building permit or prior to the certificate of compliance.
Doesn't he have a building?
He already has a, so it would be certificate of compliance then.
Okay, so certificate of compliance.
He already has a building permit, right, Mike? So then in condition B, whereas it's prior to a building permit being issued?
To prior to a.
Special permit being, or certificate of compliance being issued?
This is in B.
B and D.
And B as in void, right?
Yeah, so, the certificate of compliance.
Question about that. You mean delete B entirely?
Isn't that one of our just general conditions we have in all permits though?
We do, but.
I realize.
Prior, should we say if applicable? Or, I mean, legal counsel, please advise.
I'm reading, I'm letting me read the condition. Prior to, it's approval by the.
I did read this and thought, maybe it's just one of the regular ones.
Yeah.
But it's, this is such a different one, and so many aspects in terms of.
I mean, I think it's easy enough that John and, I'm assuming Brent is our stormwater officer, can just say it's not applicable.
Okay, and we've done that before, we've had plenty of them in there, we keep them in there, and if they're not applicable, they're just not.
We just always do, I hate to break with precedent, but it's weird, so you, so it's still.
I would leave it, but just nothing needs to.
Okay, all right.
Yumila?
Building permit?
I would leave it, well, yes, I guess if he already has the building permit, it's already been done, but.
So that would, that, that condition would.
It's already been met.
Yeah, all right.
Yumila, you got it coming?
The only question I had is about, so D is based on the establishment of the escrow account, but is there anything that we want to put in here in terms of wording with timing? Because we did say, if, you know, the sewer's gonna be put in place, you put them in after the sewer, if the sewer's not gonna be in place for X amount of months or a year or whatever, leave for the trees anyway.
Yeah, I think somebody had started that comment.
Right, that was, that's a good point.
So yes, it's before a certificate of compliance, but also.
Well, that's just to establish the escrow.
That's just to establish the escrow, right.
But how long would the escrow sit there?
Until it's.
Until it's done.
Well, that part, and definitely the special permit itself has a timeframe on it, but I assume that we want it in, before just the normal expiration of a special permit.
Well, not, I mean, he's, he's meeting the condition of the special permit by making the escrow.
Right.
That meets the condition.
Right, we'd have to put another.
It would have to be timeline within the escrow.
So it's upon completion, so it's upon acceptance of the E actually, isn't it?
What, what?
This, once the either existing septic system is, you know, accepted, or the sewer system, then this could be completed.
The trees?
The trees could be planted yet. The real issue is, if they're gonna put a sewer system in, you don't want the trees to be disrupted by the digging.
E is the sewer, the sewer.
Right.
Or the septic system, so they can come in and say, septic's fine.
At which point, plant the trees when it's appropriate.
Or, or septic is fine, but sewer's still gonna come through, we just want their certificate.
Right, I see.
To me, this is, I'm assuming the amount of this escrow is gonna be relatively small.
Couple hundred bucks.
That it would likely cost more in legal fees for a very doctorate of escrow agreement, so it's just when he gets the trees planted, he gets the money back.
Right, that's fine, so.
And timeline, it's whenever he wants his money back.
So an estimate to be submitted, when?
After approval of what? Of the estimate? Estimate by the code officer.
So he could do that tomorrow or in a year?
Well, and prior to his, prior to, I think we said the certificate of compliance.
Oh, so we had to insert that.
Yeah, that's why I'm sorry.
Yeah, so he put it up on the screen, yeah, the very first thing is, before a certificate of compliance can be issued.
That this triggers.
Okay, that's, so I missed that somehow, so prior to the certificate, okay.
Of compliance being issued, an estimate will be submitted, Mike will have to approve that estimate.
I think it would be very similar to the kind of informal escrow that we currently have with Lansing Meadows for the few trees that he failed to finish out, that Mike just took a thousand dollars from him, and he'll get it back when he fixes the trees.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're comfortable with that, then that answers your question, I know that was a long.
Yes, so prior to the certificate of compliance being issued.
An estimate is to be submitted.
Yeah.
Okay, so knowing that the language is cleaned up, then, do people want to vote on this tonight? So if we do want to vote on it, we need to close the public hearing, I think we've done everything else we need to do for this, right, Mike? It would just be, okay, it would just be closing a public hearing and then voting on the resolution, if everyone's comfortable with that? Lorraine, Jim, you guys okay with it?
Yeah, the only question I have is, and, you know, same, same point I've made other times, although this is less complex, I always like to vote on the resolution that has the language that is going to be in the resolution.
He's got it up on the screen, I know that it's hard to see, but that, that's the, that's the only change to it, is in D, it would, oh yeah, I was gonna say, you can, so in D it would say, oh, let me shrink that so you can actually see it, before a certificate of compliance can be issued, that's the only change, and then it says.
That's what I thought.
Clear? Oh yeah, can be issued, Mike, in D, before a certificate of compliance can be issued. Hey, good catch. I was looking at it too. So that's, that's the, that's the change. And then it goes into the same thing that you have, that's printed off if it's easier to read. All right, I think that's the only thing that changed, Mike, was that first sentence? Okay. Up to everybody though, if, if you're not comfortable, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, just, like Jim said, I like to have the final one usually, but this one is pretty simple, at least like Jim said, compared to some other ones that we talk about where we're talking about a multitude of changes sometimes, so. Up to you.
If the village attorney's comfortable with the language, and Mike's comfortable with the substance, and we are, then.
Okay.
Okay.
So is everybody?
Yeah, so if that's the case, then I'll, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for special permit number 2022-4629.
So moved.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, I know that there's no video right now, so, and then we can move on to the resolution, so, this is the Village of Lansing, oh, go ahead, Mike. Oh, yeah, I have to get them, thank you. I knew there was something, I was like, I can't possibly have had a.
Totally dropped.
Can't be that easy. I even have my cheat sheet in front of me too, I was like, we filled it all out, we did it all.
You have to put it out almost every time, trust me.
Do you wanna, do you want to put them up on the screen, Mike, or not? I've got my copybook. Okay, I'll read through it, so, these are the Village of Lansing general conditions, so, no special permit will be granted by the planning board or the board of trustees until the requested activity meets the following requirements, I'll read these off. One, it will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. It will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity or neighborhood. It will not impede the orderly development of the vicinity or neighborhood and is appropriate in appearance and in harmony with the existing or intended character of the vicinity or neighborhood. The street system and off-street parking facilities can handle the expected traffic in a safe and efficient manner. Natural surface water drainage ways are not adversely effective. Water and sewage or waste disposal facilities are adequate. The general environmental quality of the proposal in terms of site planning, architectural design, and landscaping is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Lot area access parking and loading facilities, excuse me, are sufficient for the proposed use. The requested use or facility conforms in all other aspects in respects to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. The applicant has shown that steps will be taken where necessary to meet all performance standards and all other applicable general requirements. I will entertain a motion to say that these requirements have been met. Motion by Pat, and second by Lorraine, all in favor?
Aye.
Now on to the special permit resolution. Okay, so this is the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for Special Permit Number 2022-4629, adopted on December 12th, 2022. Whereas this matter involves consideration of the following proposed action, Special Permit Number 2022-4629, for the proposal of Zachary, and I forget how to say your last name.
Crozna.
You have it, Crozna, okay, good, to have a detached second residence located at 991 Cuyahoga Heights Road, tax parcel number 43.1-1-29, and B, on November 14th, 2022, November 29th, 2022, and December 12th, 2022, the Village of Lansing Planning Board opened and continued a public hearing regarding this proposed action, and therein thoroughly reviewed and analyzed the materials and information presented by and on behalf of the applicant in support of this proposed action, including information and materials related to the environmental issues, if any, which the board deemed necessary or appropriate for its review, all other information and materials rightfully before the board, including if applicable comments and recommendations, if any, provided by the Tompkins County Department of Planning, in accordance with general municipal law sections 239L and 239M, and all issues raised during the public hearing. And/or otherwise raised in the course of the board's deliberations. And C, the planning board finds this to be a type-two action for secret purposes. Now therefore be it resolved as follows, the Village of Lansing Planning Board hereby finds, subject to conditions and requirements, if any, set forth below and the provisions provided for in paragraph B above, that the proposed action meets all general conditions required for all special permits, Village of Lansing Code Section 145-59E, any applicable conditions required for certain special permit uses, Village of Lansing Code Section 14560, and any applicable conditions required for uses within a combining district, Village of Lansing Code Section 14561. And two, it is hereby determined by the Village of Lansing Planning, the Special Permit Number 2022-4629 is granted and approved or denied, subject to the following conditions and requirements, so we've got our general conditions in there about soil erosion control is A. B is getting the appropriate approval by the village engineer and stormwater officer. C is the other required permits, whether they're federal, state, county, or local, and then the two that we added are D and E, so D is, before a certificate of compliance can be issued, an estimate is to be submitted by the owner and approved by the code officer for the planting of two street front trees at 991 Cuyahoga Heights Road, according to the standards listed in the Village Code Section 14527. After an approval, an escrow shall be established in the amount of the estimate. And E, a certificate of compliance may be issued, may be issued for the second residence only after Tompkins County Health Department approval of the existing septic system or site connection to the sewer system. So I will entertain a motion to approve this special permit.
Please.
Motion by Pat. Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay, well, there you go, Zach, Mike will be in touch with, you know, next steps and anything, anything else that you have to take care of?
Okay. So what?
Yes, so the next item on the agenda is other business, discussion of, excuse me, proposed solar law, much similar to last time, Lisa and I and Carolyn have not met, though I am hoping, not that this will be a surprise to Lisa probably, but, oh, we're all back in town now, so we might be able to meet this weekend to go over some stuff. I though have gone back through the complete model of solar law since we last met, and I know I sent that out to you and Carolyn, and I know that, I know everyone's just jumping to bits to read through everything, but I went back through and, and started taking a look at the sections that we hadn't covered yet, and they're pretty, compared to the other stuff, they're pretty light, it's more.
Oh, good.
Sort of guidance from New York State, there's no, excuse me, fill in the blank or modify for your municipality or anything like that, that really comes in those following sections too much, but we should still review them, because I know when we, when we were looking over some of the original things, Carolyn had some questions about, I know that this is what, you know, the state provided for guidance, does that make the most sense for our village here? You know, do we want to make sure that, you know, we require a building permit for this stuff, and then only a special permit for these other specific things? And there, the model law doesn't really cover things like that, so.
I think one of the things that was kind of a sticking point, and we kind of were more in agreement than with Carolyn, was that 110% thing about, you know, and I just, I have not taken the time to figure out why the state came up with that, but I, I will say, you know, I, I'm always a little cautious about just sort of, there's a reason, and I really, I, I don't want to proceed without knowing what the reason was, how they came up with that.
In some of the things, and there's a, there's a guidance document that goes along with it, some of the things they explain, oh, here's why we did this, or here's why we did include this, but there's nothing about that.
So that's, that's interesting, and it, that worries me, because when, something bothers me like that, I just really want to get to the bottom of it, but I haven't had the time, honestly, so.
So I'm gonna send you an email, I'll be around this weekend, if people have time, and if not.
It would be, no, I really feel like I've lost track of the whole project, and we need to get back onto it, yeah, so whatever we can do, but, to, you know, just having this thing with Zach too, is I really hope that, is anybody else interested in getting involved with like, looking at the tree law from a residential perspective?
Other than me.
Because, yeah, other than, because, you know, we kind of were interested in getting the tree law in place, because we have some situations in our village that we want to be sure that we have protected ourselves from just clear cutting for various developments, but when it comes to residential, it gets a little more complicated, and we don't want to discourage people, but I also don't want them clear cutting.
Right.
And so, you know, it's like, there are some sort of decent ones out there, and we gotta start somewhere, but we just need to get some other people involved at a kind of a subcommittee level.
Well, the clear cutting piece of it is that, now that the law is in place, at least that part's handled, but when you get to, you know.
The street trees.
Right, exactly.
It is kind of different, and so I don't know.
I mean, we talked about this, I think, when Zach was first here, the first night, didn't, what were we talking about, like, because the structure's already there.
That's right, no.
And like, a bedroom and a, and a kitchen, or whatever, a little apartment up there, it didn't make sense to me why he has to plant trees, because his building was already there.
Because it's a special permit.
Because it's a special permit.
And that's what triggered it.
And then we talked about, there's only really, very few residential special permits.
Occupation and a second residence.
Yeah, so, yeah, in fact, one of the things that I'm hoping to do is, I would, I would like to find out from Zach, how much, in fact, I just didn't want, I'd hoped to call him and ask him if he would be willing to share with us, how much it costs to get an arborist in, like, I'd like to know how arduous. how much, in fact, I just didn't want, I'd hoped to call him and ask him if he would be willing to share with us how much it costs to get an arborist in. Like, I'd like to know how arduous this is financially, time-wise, you know, a bunch of stuff, so that we could make a better decision about some of this stuff, because I don't, I don't know an arborist. I mean, yeah, I do, but, I don't know, you call him, and sometimes you don't get him back, of course. I just don't have any clue how difficult this was.
Yeah, he sent me a copy of his bill. It was $200.
Was it? Okay.
I don't, I don't know if there's any, if there was any other part of it, but I described the arborists coming on there, figuring out the units as per our appendix.
So he, because he gave you their part, okay, so that was two hundred. But I'd just kind of like to talk to him offline.
Yeah.
And to kind of find out what his experience was.
What his process was like.
And what is, you know, what, what input he might have for us that we could sort of think about as we're kind of developing that more residential paragraph or whatever we decide to do with the law. But I think we do need to look at it. I've, I've looked at a couple others from, um, always it's like Long Island and some of these other places, but they have some good ideas, if we're willing to pursue them. But it's a little, it's a little tough to sometimes put this out there, but we have to make a decision.
Yeah.
The other thing that I'd love to make sure that we look at is quality, not just quantity.
Yes.
Because that's one thing that, that's often in laws. You're just like, okay, well, put in two. Well, which two?
I would, I wanted to ask him tonight, but I thought we can do that. But yeah, we, we actually have the Cornell list somewhere of approved.
It's not on the website.
Yeah. But, yeah, which ones?
Yeah, you're right.
Right. Yeah, because then there's specifically, and specifically in that, there's some that we don't want.
Yes, right. Well, for sure, we don't.
Yeah, you know, there's a whole invasive species list that we don't want.
And then I guess the other thing is, do we have, like, a preferred vendor that we send people to, or you think it's a village?
You mean it for arborists?
Yeah. No, well, or for the tree providing the trees.
Well.
Is that against Village of some sort of code?
I wouldn't be recommending people.
Okay. They just, I don't know. Some people know what they're doing in terms of, I mean, I just think of the, the whole wire thing.
How much more, is someone gonna pay more because they go to Kidland State? Or less because they go to a different?
Well, what I'm thinking of, though, is the wire situation, where they were gonna put in hemlocks, which we know are at all get susceptible, and that's just dumb. You want to talk about wasting money.
Yeah.
And then looking terrible, and then needing to be replaced, et cetera, maybe, if they're diligent.
Yeah.
And so I, I just, that's what I'm wondering, if we have, like, how, how far can you go with that? Like, here's a list of some suggested providers or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen precedents where there are lists of approved trees and trees that are not acceptable.
Yeah.
And then there's this whole gray area.
There's this gray area where, you know, okay, well, I guess if it's not, you know, not, it's not on the no list, and it's not on the yes list, you know, hey, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
And then, of course, there's issues with, you know, diameter planting and that kind of.
And so that's, that's all in the code, yeah.
Okay.
That's all, or in the law.
We were very specific as to if it's a certain number of trees that have to be planted. It all can't be the same type of tree. You have to have different types of trees, and the height differentials, and try to take all that into consideration.
It's what I call the sleeping beauty syndrome. You know, you can think of everything, but that last one.
There's always one last one.
Or kill you, whatever.
Okay. So, yeah, well, I'll send you, I'll send you.
All right, that would be great.
And maybe we can talk about the residential piece of the trailer in just a little bit. Uh, next item on the agenda is the trustee report, and I'm gonna need some people's help on this one, because it was mine, and for the same rea, I had, I had gotten my booster, my second booster, and I didn't make it to the thing for email either. I did not feel well at all, so. Yeah.
That's the most important.
I, well, I was gonna say, I know the one thing on the agenda was, uh, was, it was a very short meeting from what I.
The mayor was not here. I think it was less than half an hour.
That's, see, that's the one that, uh, if it was, if it wasn't gonna have the, uh.
By Carolyn.
Did they approve the extra plow, correct, or did they?
They did approve the extra plow for John's trial.
Oh, yes, that was.
Transfer $200.
There was the ARPA fund transfer, yeah.
Yeah, and the fund transfer.
So it really worked.
It was less than 30 minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who's on for January?
Me.
Right?
They'll probably cancel both of those meetings, too, because the first.
January 2nd, yeah, that one's.
And the second one is Martin Luther King Day.
Oh, that's definitely.
Yeah, they'll cancel that one, then.
Oh, so I'm off, and I was like.
Just shift everything.
I was gonna say.
We can, we can shift.
Just shift everything. That is just terrible, Joe.
Calendar for next year, and I'm, I was kind of looking forward to it, and I'm like, you know what? I bet they cancel both of those meetings.
Bet you're right.
That's okay. I'm on again in June.
Or February.
Where you know.
Sure, Janetean calls on one of them. I think we should just.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look. I'll send a note out, and we'll see if it works for people. Maybe we'll just shift it all a month. Or, yeah, a month. Yeah, because it would be Lorraine in the.
Then I'll miss, then I'll mess it up. Then I'll get present.
I'm on for January.
There's always one cancellation almost every single month, because it's always a Monday.
Although, why are you on for February?
Uh, you are on for March.
March.
Potentially April now.
Just leave it. Somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta retype that whole sheet or update.
Oh, no, just a little Google spreadsheet.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, now it's.
Easy, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, most Excel sheet, so, just down.
Um, okay, so, yeah, other than that, I guess, so, okay, I guess that was.
Five dollars.
We should talk. We don't have.
I was gonna say, yeah, but we rarely cancel.
It's true. We really do. Rarely.
So, okay. Um, other items?
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll go around. You want to bring anything up, Lorraine?
No, can you believe it? Oh, I do have to.
But I, I want to.
No, you've timed.
Tonight, I went, I was gonna go over to the post office and stop, and you know what? They must have worked. They must have done something, because 30 feet before I even get to the end of the intersection, the light changed green, and there was no one else around.
You're just tracking on your car now, and those are your headphones.
And it gets, I couldn't believe it. It changed green, and I was like, there wasn't anybody there. And I'm, and so I dumped my mail in the little chute thing, and I drove back around. It was still green. But then after I came through it, somebody else.
It's broken green, no.
It's green all four ways.
I was watching, though, and somebody did come up, and so it started changing. I was still going down Warren Road, right, but I was still watching. And it changed green again while I was, and I'm like, you know what? I wonder if it's on some timer thing now. And it's just.
Maybe it's just the added weight of the mail you had.
All the Christmas presents in the back of the car, yeah.
Anyway, I couldn't believe it. That's the first, they did something. I mean, it changed way before I was even at the end of the street.
I came back from Maine and collected my mail, because I had it on hold, and it changed for me, and I thought of you. And I thought, huh, it's working for me, but my car's tired.
Did you co-op BOMAX?
Yeah, oh, always. I always drive through just to see what traffic is, whether the quantitat's doing well, and all of that. I always do. But I will say that to the other point you made about the encampment by Pizza Hut, it's definitely in the back when we.
And it's still there.
It is, right. It's getting, it was, and when we first pulled up, it came, and then it's, it actually looked like they added some stuff, so I don't know. Who, is that basically the mall owners have to address that? Who has to address that?
It doesn't belong to the mall. It's a separate entity.
Oh, it is. So, I mean, how, how do we handle these situations?
Anytime, for example, when there was someone over here on Graham Road, in the campment there, I contacted, well, my contact at the, at the mall, and asked them to have them removed, because we can't do anything. The village is private property, so it's their responsibility. So they ended up calling up to the Sheriff's Department, and the sheriffs came down and.
So, but.
Moved everything.
This isn't just about law enforcement. This is about people that need a place to live, I think, isn't it? I mean, how?
I mean, you think somebody's actually, do you think somebody just left that, all that behind, though? I can't, this, it's cold now. I can't imagine that.
Yeah, it's, it's moved around some, I don't know.
I, I know, I saw, from the first time I saw, um, later in the week, I noticed it looked like more things had been added.
You actually drive back there, Lisa? Because I'm.
I didn't drive back. No, 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 no. I was, I had occasion both times to be coming.
Yeah.
I'm 13.
Oh, yeah, and you can see it.
You can sort of see it. Crazy, have an accident trying to see it.
I know, I know, me too, because I'm.
I was taking notes because of what you'd said, and I just.
Yeah.
I don't know, it just.
What happens if the property, you know, the property owner is notified? What happens?
Then there's something I'm sure I can find in the property maintenance code that I can write them up on. I'm just, I try, I've been, since I've got here, I've tried to do everything as far as go talk to people, say, hey, look.
Right.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, definitely. I was just curious.
Selfishly, I try to save myself some paperwork.
That should be removed. I mean, it really should be removed, though.
It usually works. I mean, I've got the lease, I've got to know everybody, and if something comes up, I give them a call, and they say, yeah, we'll take care of it. It usually do.
Well, to your point, too, Lisa, right, if somebody does show up, it's not just like, hey, go. It's hopefully they're pointing them towards some services.
I was just gonna say, it just, yeah, it's worrisome. You know, we have this issue, and it's increasing.
Yeah.
I think as, you know, just kind of as a society, it's something obviously we're not addressing very well.
All right, this is not unique to.
No, 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 it isn't, but it's, it's increasing. So, um, how's our veterans, how are our projects going from your point of view?
Do the, well, I mean, I can, let me go through what I've got now, and shit down Jim, or, or Jim, he's just gonna skip.
Jim, did you have anything?
Oh, um, no. I didn't, I didn't have anything. The only thing is, maybe I've said this informally, but we were talking earlier about trees. Maybe this is just starting to bother me more as I see it. It's not so much around here, but I noticed, you know, I'm thinking back a little, like, a lot of new, newer developments in construction, they put in what I call fake hills, which is basically bulldoze some dirt into a hill and plant grass on it, and then plunk ever, some kind of evergreen trees on the top of it, and it's just, I don't know, maybe I didn't use, didn't used to bother me, but I think it's more prevalent. I think that's the sort of thing we want to avoid. Call it shabby landscaping, for lack of a better term, but it just looks fake, and it's not aesthetically pleasing. And, you know, the evergreen trees that are planted are not native, you know, to here or to Ohio. It's, it's unlike when you're out somewhere, you see an evergreen forest, like in Carolina, or the Pacific. You know, those are beautiful. Just planting some bushy evergreen trees on top of an artificial hill is just becoming more common.
I like shabby landscaping. I think that's a good, that's a good definition of it, yeah.
I think one of the challenges here, too, is that for a lot of the village, your, your shale is eight inches down, so you have to build up, or otherwise you can't get the tree in. So we've.
Well, no, I'm talking about, a bulldozer creates a pile of dirt that's maybe 15 or 20 feet high. Basically, basically, as a, as a, as a visual block, so the buildings, be they apartments or condos or whatever, can't see the roads. Supposedly, they reduce traffic. When you're driving down the road, all you see is this hill with grass on it.
And I don't like that.
But that, I don't, I haven't noticed it around here.
That's the thing, like, you know, I kind of.
Right, so we've got BOMAX up there. I think that's a good example. There's a lot of frontage there. I mean, imagine what that would look like, right, if you couldn't.
See the apartment. I like being able to sort of see what's going around in the village.
But I wouldn't mind more trees.
As long as stuff's aesthetically pleasing, right? But I don't, yeah, some more trees might be nice, but I don't want it just, like, blocked off by some, you know, gigantic 200-foot-long wall, whether it's dirt or, yeah, so, but, right, to Jim's point, yeah, it's, it's nice that that's not there.
Yeah, it would be like, yeah, using that example, if, if the developer created a 15- or 20-foot fake hill with planted grass on it, and then slaps some evergreens. It's not aesthetically pleasing. If you're driving, I want to be able to drive and see the buildings, and and as least for my own house, I want to look out the window and see the road.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Maybe a project that this?
Well, to answer your question, the V8 clinic and the Alcohol and Drug Center are kind of in the same slot right now. They have received a long list of what I need for them to finalize everything. I think one of the sticking points for the V8 clinic is they haven't gotten their sign yet, either.
I noticed Party City was upside.
I know.
I thought was kind of interesting. Although, honestly, I've.
Noticed that.
That, because it means they're not there anymore.
But why don't they just remove it?
Because, I don't know, they want you to know it was there.
They must have just, they must have just, I've never noticed that.
I have.
Tonight, tonight was the first, and I'm like, is that upside down? Lisa, I, I know, and I'm like, wait a minute.
I'm going, it's on duty. Oh, God.
Um, after a bunch of changes, um, to the medical center, they now have their building permit, so they should be going. Um, next Tuesday, 20th, uh, I have a BZA scheduled for.
McGuire?
Scheduled for McGuire and for Nushin to come in.
Oh, yes.
Hopefully she gets me herself. She's in Italy, I believe, right now. That's, that's all set up. I'm also trying to set up a, a lighting commission to review the McGuires. I'll send, like I said, I'll send out some more.
Yeah, we'll talk after.
Yeah, Jim's been real tough to deal with.
I'm not surprised.
Um, what else? I have sent out, speaking of lighting, I have sent out several lighting violations. For example, the obvious ones, M&amp;T and Spooky Clean. Uh, a few over on St. Mary's Drive.
Oh, good.
Good. I was, in fact, I just drove by the other night again, and I just thought, okay, I have to, shall I give you something in writing? It is, it's terrible. They need to do it, and they need to do it soon.
You mean M&amp;T, or?
Yeah, it's terrible. And I know there are guidelines for banks, and there, all these other ATMs are fully lighted, everything's cool, but it is blind, and it's truly blinding, and there's fairly, the streetlights there are also nothing great, so they are so obviously noticeable that they still, I find them blinding, in spite of with the streetlights, which are.
On the north side here, as you come off the bridge, it hits you right in the eyes.
Well, so does it coming from the south.
And then if you come off of Sheridan Drive, you've got the one that's over the drive-through display.
It's horrible. It is just horrible. Although, they really need to do something.
Yeah, so they, they've been written up. I've sent that.
How about the, um, was that, is that the, the Ethica Mall? Is that the one across from M&amp;T? Turpan Mall, that's right. Because they have, of course, they don't hit you in the eye, but if you turn and look at it, if you're, say, leaving here to go towards M&amp;T Bank, and you look to your left, there's a couple really bright LED lights.
Yeah, I found.
But there's a lot of other light that kind of diffuses.
Found that, I, I've found is I've driven around, like, like.
Yeah.
You've got some that are just grossly violating.
It's terrible.
But then you've got.
Yeah, I know. Start with the low-end.
Okay, yeah, you could write them up. Do you, what are you gonna do? I mean, it's, it's tough there, but the ones that are pretty gross, I've been.
The M&amp;T is bad.
So you got M&amp;T is one of the bad ones. What are the other bad ones?
Um, the, the little, the small, the mini plaza over on, um.
Cinema Drive.
Cinema Drive.
Oh, by McGuire's?
There's, there's a few new lights that went in. What happened, we believe what happened was the ones that were rejected on East Point because they were too bright.
Did they put them over there?
They brought them over there.
They own it.
Are you talking about the shopping mall or the apartment? Oh, both.
How creative.
It's both somewhat.
Recycling. They are so cheap.
It's somewhat the same.
Sorry, Susan.
They're recycling.
So, yeah, they use them down there, so.
Can you just put in a lower watt bulb? I mean, what, I mean, really? Call them to it. Seriously.
Yeah.
Call them to it.
We'll see how that goes.
There's some great light fixtures out there that really are awful.
Yeah, I mean, since McGuire's gonna have to, are you gonna have McGuire lighting up there? Do they have to put in new lighting over there?
Take a look.
And they.
Chevy Cadillac?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll go, they've, they've given us a lighting plan. Uh, the lighting plan they gave us, I don't know if you guys remember, there was a lot of.
Fire?
Yeah, yeah, there was a lot of lighting out there that was way over the limit.
Yes.
For, for Village Code. I sent Bear and John Snyder the, the code, and they, they've actually brought it down quite significantly.
Have they? Good.
Yeah, um, there's a few that are still a little overboard, but they're actually right up against some entries. Call them and get some service entries, so it's nice to have light there. So that's gonna go to, uh, it'll go to Pat and Jim and John Corning. We'll take a look at it, see if they get it together, and, but I think they're really close.
Well, while, when they're doing their new lighting, maybe you can get Park Grove to do their lighting over at the mini mall there. Take out the posts they put in.
Well, I should hear back from that. Somebody will hear back. I'll hear back.
It doesn't even matter. They just need to comply. Period. It's, I mean, there's all sorts of people that are doing their, doing it right. They just.
I mean, it's, I quoted what, you know, the, the law that was passed from here to. I mean, it's, I quoted what, you know, the, the law that was passed from here to, I quoted, okay, here's what your violation is. You can argue with it all you want, but it's right there.
That's right. What is our fine for this? Anything? Do we have a fine? Two fifty?
Two fifty a day.
Yeah, okay. The usual two fifty a day.
That's a lot. That's a lot.
Was that per fixture?
Per violation. That's per violation, right?
You'd think somebody would write right back to you.
Well, they certainly need to comply.
Who's the owner?
Squeaky Clean, you said?
Squeaky Clean. They have, we have been, in fact, I have a folder on Squeaky Clean. Would you like?
I've gotten an email from Gary saying that the lights have been turned down. If I go take a look at them again to see if they're any better. Before I say anything, I need to go look at them to see if they're any better.
Take a left when you leave.
Yep, when you leave here.
I thought that.
Right by.
Well, he put those things over the vacuums, right? And those are lighted.
Those are fine.
That's right. I thought what he agreed to do is just leave those on.
The ones that are on the facade.
The building, building are the ones, right?
But the whole thing is, he, he had talked about, okay, I'll shut them off at a certain time. Can you count on that? The light is there, it needs to be shielded properly, it needs to be dark guy compliant. It needs to have a valance over it.
Yes, that's it.
If he's leaving those lights there, a valance over it would work. Otherwise, bring in, set up different lights, which is more costly than a valance. Set up different lights that actually shine straight down. He has parking lot lights now that work, which is fine.
So, but we've been at this now for what, three, four years? More?
This is the first time we've actually had some, I've had some meat that I could actually.
Good, okay. Because it's just time. I mean, it's just a waste of your time, nothing else.
Yeah.
It's wrong.
It's, takes up one of my naps. I just can't nap.
So now I have to be on light alert? Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm stickler about the light thing.
Yep.
Oh, that's right.
All right, now, now I'm, I am pro-light.
Now I'm anti-light.
Now I'm gonna be, now I'm.
We need to get you on a couple of courses. The right amount of light for the right situation is perfectly fine with me, too. But when it's like too much, that's the thing.
Well, so I like bright lights. So when they put in the new posts at East Point, I was disappointed because those lights are not as bright as the ones that were there prior. And I liked the bright lights. People actually complained about the bright lights. People that lived, the tenants were complaining because they would shine in their bedroom windows. But you know what? I'd rather have a well-lit area than not a well-lit area.
But if you don't need it to be lighting their bedrooms, you need it to be lighting where.
Yeah, the street. Right. Right. Right.
Like a valance or, or some sort of shade or something.
Have you ever been to Hilton Head?
No.
Well, I went to Hilton Head. We were with some friends. The guy was complaining about the lighting because, of course, you can see the stars and, you know, and this is all tourist. And he said, I said, it's because they do it right. You know, it, I mean, it's, but it's a biological interrupter and that's, that's for us, too. So you want to just do it right if you possibly can. And there's no reason to not anymore. It used to be more expensive. It isn't anymore. It's just, we gotta let people know. And in fact, there's, I, I keep grappling with the residential portion of that, too, is when people come in, is to remind them. Because I just realized that there's one now on Oak Press. They just redid the thing and now there's these floodlights coming out in the road. I'm thinking, I hate to file a complaint, but maybe. I'll have to see.
I'm, I'm counting on people that live here in the village. I mean, I don't, the only time I come through the, really through the village is after tonight and any other time, my bedtime's six-thirty, so I'm never.
No, but it's, no, it really is.
Maybe watch the Steelers play.
Sundays, yeah, I only watch them.
But it is pretty amazing. I mean, light is, I literally get light from the hospital, the hospital on the other.
Oh, my gosh, really?
Of the lake. If you come into my living room in the middle of the night, which I'm prone to do because I don't sleep so well, I can cast shadows on my walls.
Wow.
They're so bloody bright.
But if you live, you're in a village, you're driving through the village or whatever, and you see something, let me know. Send me.
Exactly.
Email link, let me know.
Right, because you can't do anything.
It's the only way I'm.
No, I know.
And I'll be, you're already in town at night.
M&amp;T is a problem.
It has been.
Because if you're exiting the long driveway, say, from Lansing West Apartments, heading towards North Tripamore Road, there's a set of lights, and they've been there for a long time, that really hit you and they're extremely bright.
But, no, some of it is just a safety thing. It is night blindness, you know, glare, and you get this just momentary.
Yeah.
Or, you know, half-minute or whatever it is.
There's walkers.
Yeah, no, that's.
The only time you'll get attention is, it won't be that brightness. It'll be that somebody doesn't, the lights are out. That's the only time.
I was gonna say, it's another one, sorry. It wasn't bright. Well, maybe you can give us an update on the lights at the next meeting. Brian and I are, Brian Quardrosi and I are working on operating permits for our two residencies. Those are multi-unit residencies. Basically coming up with a punch list, so to speak, to hand out to the actual owners of, of these multi-unit buildings. So that they can kind of bring the standards up if they aren't up. And this actually, with this operating permit, if they don't provide all of this, then, you know, they, they're in violation and we can hold back their operating permit and then go through the whole process of sending out penalties and whatnot. So it's, like I said, this gives us a little bit more meat also to try to bring some of these properties up to standard. Some of them are fine, but other ones just need to be up to standard. The last thing I have is the New York Planning Federation. It is their annual, their conference, zoning conference. It's gonna be in Saratoga Springs, April sixteenth, April eighteenth. We have in our budget to be able to send two people to it. I'll send you out more when I get what the topics are after January first, but it might be a real good.
I'm gonna have to go to New York that week. I wouldn't be able to do it. I have to be in New York for the nineteenth and twentieth.
Jim and I, actually, the last time that we went was in Saratoga. It was good.
No, it is always good.
It is, it really, yeah.
Ours was Bolton Point.
Or, that's right. That's right, it was. That's right, yeah, but it was in Bolton Landing. But we went to the conference. That I remember. No, it, it was good, Jim. So I'll send it out. We, we have the funds to send two people. So.
I have been doing quite a few of those webinars. Actually, I did a bunch of them a couple of months ago, and I have found them to be very, very helpful.
But there's lunch ones or?
Yeah, but I, I did the recordings, though. I emailed, and I still have a few more that I haven't gotten to yet, but they were really helpful.
The, the webinars are good, but this is webinars on steroids.
Well, this is live.
Yeah, they're live, they're in person. These are really good. Yeah, go in there, you can, you can ask questions and it's just more hands-on. Right, and it's, it's everybody. You've got, there's people who are on planning boards there, zoning boards there, trustees there, mayors, code enforcement officers. There's a bunch of people there and it's, so, yeah.
It's energizing. It is, you know, like any kind of conference that you.
I was gonna say, when Jim and I were there, it's when they were revising Seeker.
Oh, that one.
And there was a session on, I mean, it's, the topics, there was a session on food trucks, you know, and, you know, the permitting, like, it was good. And we've talked about that here. That's, that's come up here in the village just a. You know, handful of times anyway, between, you know, then and now, so.
So I'll send the flyer out and I, we can discuss that after.
We can chat.
The ones that you've gone to at the.
Oh, you have to email them. You have to email them and you tell them which, which recordings you'd like, and then they send you a link. And I think that's how they keep track.
And the NYPD has a list of courses. See, then email and say you'd like the.
Yeah, I wanna see, can you send me the webinar for, you know, for these three?
And then when you're done, you tell them you're done. They'll give you a certificate. So that's my point, to make sure if you don't have your four hours into Jody.
So you get, well, you can ask Jody and she'll tell you. You get twelve hours for this. So you can take care of it the next three years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it carries over. It's pretty nice.
Are the dates again, Mike?
She's like, wait a minute.
I know. No, I really do have to be in New York the nineteenth, but what?
Sixteenth to eighteenth of April.
I don't know if I could.
There's always next year, too, so, yeah.
Yeah. Do they only do these kind of things, like once a year?
This is their big annual conference, yeah. They have, and they're starting to ramp them back up. They just started this year. They have a couple.
Kind of hybrid in-person and online ones, too, that aren't nearly as long. It's more of like a, a day thing, but, yeah. So, yeah, if you want to send it out and as we, as we start hearing about other resources, we'll, you know, have some.
They're well worth it, well worth it.
It is well worth it, frankly. I mean, obviously, well, you know, you can walk into a couple of sessions and you say, well, maybe not this one.
Well, that's, but there's always plenty of sessions, too, right?
But I was gonna say, there's not, and you can really pick and choose, but it's just, some of this needs to go into some of the ones you don't think you're gonna need, and then later you think, oh, well, yeah. But, no, it is, it's definitely worth it.
Yeah, I've had to go, something similar to this, but code officials. You end up having to go every five years to take a certain section. It takes about ten hours. You're there about ten hours for two days. And it's actually, the information is good, but, you know, you run into, I run into other code officials.
Right.
Bouncing questions off of them. You're like, oh, man, that's a good idea. We'll try that. It's just, you'll run into things like that.
No, it is, it's, it's good. I think the very first year I was on the board, Marty Mosley was also new and we went, I think it was like Classic or something. And it just really gets you off to a good start. Makes you say, yes, this is what I should be doing. Yeah, I can make a difference.
I'll just mention that the ZBA needs members, if anyone wants anybody.
Yeah, actually, I think they need two.
You're okay with the BGA, right? I checked with you, didn't I?
Yeah, I'm good.
There's, there's someone that has been walking their dog on our street.
It's like looking around you.
No, 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 I have a question for you.
Yeah.
And I chatted with him, and this was some time ago, and then I didn't realize the BGA. And he and his wife recently moved here and are both lawyers, retired, huh? And I thought, maybe I should try to bump into him again, walk on his dog and see if he's interested. Because it's not terribly demanding. And yet, it would be a good. Even he wanted to move along, right?
I wanna do something.
So I'm thinking.
I sent my husband out to walk the dog. I don't usually walk the dog.
Do you have a greyhound?
Yes, ours is a black greyhound.
I thought that was your husband. I just talked to him the other day, too. I was getting my man's. And I thought, I think that's your husband, but I didn't.
Yeah, the black greyhound is mine.
I thought, that was my only thing. I'm done. More than done.
Okay. Back?
Nope.
Emily?
Happy to be here.
We're happy.
Happy to have you here.
Okay.
Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at eight oh six PM.
Moved.
Motion by Lisa, second by Jim. All in favor?
Y'all next week, or not next week.
Oh, my gosh.
I will say, I was at the mall Saturday night. I went for dinner at the Mexican restaurant, but in the mall, there were so many people in there.
Really?
It's Christmas time, but there's no stores. I don't know what they were doing there, but I have not seen that many people in the mall in, like, forever.
Really? Wow.
Some stores? Oh, yeah, I haven't been in there in a long time.
I don't think there's very many stores left in there, right?
There's some. I don't know. I haven't been there.
Anyway, there were way more people than, like.
It always gets busier around the holidays.
I know. I'm like, what are these people doing? I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I was in the mall today. I was at there and, and they are, they were busy rebuilding the, where the bon ton was. They put in.
Oh, the Kewa Medical.
They mentioned, you know, around, and of course outside, the construction, part, part of parking lot.
Is that, that's to accommodate that interior.
Some, I thought that they were.
There's gonna be that interior walkway so you can get from, um.
There's some offices, administrative offices that are gonna be between where the bon ton is and the food court.
Yeah, but on the, but on the, on the main section from the front, you were gonna be able to get from inside the mall.
To the front facade and.
Yeah, okay.
They have all sorts of electrics.
Or like a hallway, you get into.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what.
That'll be good.
Will you be able to stay indoors and walk from Target to your medical MC facility?
Yeah, you'll be able to walk down to like kind of where, kind of where the food court area is. Or no, you walk down one of the, um. One of the existing, like, kind of.
You know, there is the job and then there's the front van. And then you either go outside or back into, or into the mall. You don't ever have to leave it.
That'll be nice.
That was one of the things that.
Yeah, we're called out on the floor plans, which was good.
The floor plan on that is like a labyrinth.
Yeah, it is. Oh, yeah, I don't know. It's, they are, there will be some people in that place, for sure. I mean, there's a lot of offices.
Which is good.
Oh, yeah.
No, it is.
It's better than the alternative, which is, nothing.
I'm still concerned about the empty buildings it's gonna leave behind when they start moving everybody around. You're gonna have all these empty buildings up here. What are they gonna do with them?
I was assuming they were expanding rather than relocating.
They're trying to consolidate a lot of the remote, the little, the little remote ones they have. Like, if you take a look at the, some of the ones they have, like on, um, like Craft and stuff, those are staying. But they've got all these little ones all over the place that are a few offices.
They've got the brand-new one. Well, the building is not brand-new anymore, but the one over at Community Corners that they built.
Oh, they just built that, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, yeah.
There's, I mean, there's all these.
They're moving, the thing is, I think they're moving the people that are in those buildings out.
What about like where the, where the urgent care center used to be?
Right, what's, yeah, what are they doing with that?
I don't know.
You're losing people from up there because some of the Guthrie people grew up on Bradwood.
I know. Did I, did I?
The one there by the golf course. It's by the golf course, yeah.
I've been doing long, I'm doing fine until I get to that, at which point I hit the roof, right?
That's kind of crazy.
No, that one.
Yeah, that's still, that's, that's still a ways off.
So that one down there on the corner is Kewa Med that they're building. That's, yeah, that's, that, yeah, that's, and that building's open. That's been open for a while now. And it's good. It's nice.
Cruising off.
Guthrie that was up by the storage facility.
That's, that's moved down there.
Yeah.
So that's closed up. This that was so much more convenient.
Guthrie's not there anymore? They closed down?
Not at Brentwood. The one on, um, Henshaw by the National Guard is still open.
Yeah, that's the one I got. By the storage facility.
Oh, it went down to their new facility. Nice.
The new Guthrie downtown?
What I went there for, but it's quite a nice facility. And they have a great parking lot.
The parking lot is really, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Oh, sure. Parking lot design.
Well, thank, the firm that did that one.
The new Guthrie.
Firm did that one.
The one that's by Piardi?
No, the one where the.
High guidelines for parking.
Let me say downtown.
I, I, yeah.
You know what?
I've never. Except that every now and then I might.
And then they get lost.
Just drive back.
And have a wonderful Christmas.
Well, there's a new Guthrie bill, or there's, yeah, there's a new Guthrie.
Means the haunt is gone.
To resurrect them and.
In all the years I ever lived in, I was there once and that was.
Commercial.
I used to go there for certain. Pat, we'll see you later.
I was living at one of the commercials and I thought, why is this? My big thing is.
When I was a kid, when I was a kid.
Look at that parking lot over there. Waterfront. Remember that?
I, I know that.
Yeah, you were probably two years.
I wonder if, when I, if when I was there.
But that was different. That was over there.
And why do they not?
Okay.
Yeah, aside from, I think of Ransing and, um, they first built, they used to have, you know, that used, once it's in my, it takes them out of the haunt.
That parking lot today, oh, God. And I went and I.
Eighties?
The haunt used to be down on the, downtown.
Directed the traffic, too.
In Presby, where Presby Alley is. Oh, that's where the haunt used to be.
You know, that sounds familiar because I think.
I had actually brought that up.
In the eighties, but I think I was, yeah, that's when I, that's when I would have been there, would have been the eighties.
Yeah. And then, then they decided, I think when Jay Harmon bought it, then they, they decided to go bigger and they ended up buying the waterfront.
I will happily.
I know, I know I was at the one that was, that was the haunt. Yeah, a couple of times, like in eighty-four.
And they can plan for it. And it's, it's no more.
A couple of years later, I.
Than not.
I was at the.
More expensive, but it's less attractive and enhanced.
I don't know who I, I, I was there. It was a proof of paper.
That's funny.
Well, you know what? Okay, so. So for.
That wasn't too long after.
The same way that happened with.
When did they take over?
Got a special permit.
Got torn down. It was on the water.
Yes.
Um, that, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, the haunt, yeah.
No, no, he wondered when. Make some changes to it properly.
You mean when it.
Here's the review.
When, yeah. No, because I, I know I, or I'm reminded, I've forgotten. The haunt was originally near.
But I was saying, it was.
Ethica Journal. It's like a journal.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I know, yeah, I was there a couple.
You know, every year make, you know, if I.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Yeah, have a good one.
Hold on that. I said, I don't care. I just want planned change and we should bring them into compliance over time. I don't want just grandfather bad.
Right.
I don't want grandfather bad either. I just, but.
But I understand, like, you know, basically when, when you ask them to make a change, you know, you're changing the rules for them.
Yes.
And they, that's not what they signed up for, so we have to make it incremental.
Yes.
Otherwise, they won't accept it.
Of course. And, and I think that's fair, because, yeah, I don't, I don't like the rules changing either after the game started, but, um, they have written all that stuff off long since. And you're right, they don't care now. I still care.
So the thing that has to happen is we have to have some sort of mechanism that if they want a permit for anything.
Well, this is what I said, is that when they come and they want, certainly, we should, like, I thought that we should make the change, something like that.
Okay.
Lisa, I'll see you later. I'll send you an email, send you maybe.
When, whenever.
I have to figure out my weekend stuff.
Um, we came back.
I'll be right.
On Monday.
Yeah, I couldn't remember when you came back.
And we have a bathroom that was totally demolished because we had a plumbing in the wall leak and we couldn't find it, so now redoing the bathroom, our main bathroom. And I walked in the house and we started unpacking. I went to put it away and the refrigerator died.
Oh, wow.
We were away. What's for stink?
Oh, yeah, I bet.
Freezer, it's a freezer, the freezer compartment. So I have tried to get a new fridge. It was delivered today, dented.
Oh.
Possibly, well, meanwhile, they're gonna have a hell of a time getting through the door. They're gonna take the doors off. That's what they did the last time. But that's, now it's coming Friday. I have been just cleaning out refrigerators, unpacking, I.
Well, my, did you, so did you go to the trustee meeting when?
I did not go.
Okay, yeah, oh, my God. I had got, I had got my, um.
Good thing you didn't waste your time.
I had got my shot at like.
Was this your?
This is my second booster, so it's like.
I have no.
Okay, I'm due for a booster tomorrow, actually.
So, I, you know, I, um, I got my, my first shot I was fine with. My second shot I felt off, not like awful, but like not good enough to go to work. But my first, but my first booster after that, I was just kind of tired.
But now this is your second whatever, again.